To order. And this first meeting in January is time for those commissioners that have been elected, or in this case, reelected to to take their oaths of office for their new term. And with that, I am going to turn it over to city clerk Jan Meisinger to administer the oaths. We'll start with councilman Brent Driggers.
You want to raise your right hand and repeat after me, Brent? I and then state your name.
I Brent Driggers.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And the City of Hillsborough.
City of Hillsborough.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Thank you. And Byron. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I and then state your name.
Byron McGory.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of.
Faithfully discharge the duties of.
Councilmember of the City of Hillsborough.
Councilman of the City of Hillsborough.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Affirm.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jan. And thank you, council members. Really appreciate your willingness to serve this next term and look forward to to working closely together to take care of the city of Hillsborough, Kansas. So, welcome. We'll now move on to public comments. I will turn this time over to Mr. Styles.
Okay, so if you have a public comment, we ask you to go to the participant section and raise your hand, or you can kind of unmute. We don't have a ton of people who are in from the public. So I know Mark is here, and I think you had a public comment, Mark. Is that, yep, okay. So we'll have Mark, and we do limit comments to two minutes or five minutes, or whenever the mayor says it's enough. So we'll unmute and let Mark have floor.
Yeah, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Mark Horst. I'm the owner of King Solar. We're a solar energy company based out of Yoder, Kansas. Some of you might know the previous owner of our company, Nick King, lived on Thirteen Mile Road just south of town for a number of years. And so the reason I wanted to talk to you guys tonight is we have a potential customer that lives in Hillsborough that is looking to install solar. And when I approached the city about the the solar policy, there isn't one in the state of Hillsborough. So just wanted to let you know that we are here as a resource. Obviously, we have a biased opinion of solar because we're a solar company, but we have a lot of experience working with other municipalities as far as solar policy goes. The state of Kansas does require that you allow solar to be connected, but allows you the freedom to dictate some of the nuts and bolts of how those electric credits are handled. There are some cities that have really, really, really friendly solar policy, like City of Marion has the policy that you can actually roll credits forward. So if you overproduce electricity one month, you can use that energy later in the year. That's a little too friendly, in my opinion. If I were sitting in your chairs, I wouldn't like that idea. But I like it. So if you want to do that, that's fine. Then there are some that do what's called monthly net metering, where during a billing cycle, you can produce your own energy. At the end of the billing cycle, you kind of settle up with the city and pay any any extra fees you need to pay. And if you overproduce, then that's considered a donation to the city. That's probably the one I would recommend. That's what like City of Pratt, City of Haven, I'm trying to think of a couple others that do that. And then there's a whole bunch of other ways to do it. But all I guess what I would request from the council is that you you kind of bring that to the the front burner to create a policy so that that we can move forward with with one of your your citizens to kind of get their system going. They would like to be installed by spring, but but a pretty flexible family. So I don't think that they're going to pressure you too hard to to, you know, have a deadline, but would like to have you take a look at that so they can get their project rolling. So I guess I would be open to questions if anybody has questions as well.
What do you see in other cities, Mark, with the difference between the use of the energy and the connectivity? Like a lot of them, do they have fees, a set fee for the connection to the grid?
Yeah, so I don't I don't actually know your city utility policy very well at all because this is the first time we've had a customer look at it. But most utilities have a customer fee, somewhere between seven and the highest I've seen is forty-five dollars a month. And that's just to be connected. That would pay for like meter reading, the transformer rental, or however you figure that. So somewhere between that five and forty-five dollars a month is a fixed charge. And then above that is what's called a volumetric fee. So each kilowatt hour is billed somewhere between six cents and about twenty cents is one of the highest in the state. And so if the if the homeowner produces their own energy, but has a little bit that they bought from the utility, they still get a bill for the customer charge and then any extra electricity. So, yeah. Does the city of Hillsborough have a customer fee or a meter fee currently?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Yeah, so that would that would still be part of the deal.
I thought we talked about some of this when Larry was here. Were we not?
We we have, and you know, that may not have been something that transferred to Matt in in when he came on board. But we've certainly, we're we're members of KPP, Kansas Power Pool, and that is that is where we get our electricity from, our power from. And we work very closely as a member with with that organization to and to come up with whatever policies that that we need to 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 address things like this. And solar is going is is coming, you know, it's not going away. And, you know, we need to, we need to figure out a way to be able to handle solar and also continue to maintain our grid. So we've got to have some kind of revenue stream in there that helps us continue to maintain the grid and still allows the consumer to enjoy the benefits and savings that they can get from solar power. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a dance. I know that there's been some discussion about metering in in allowing the consumer to sell the city the power at the at the at the rate that we get it currently. And then and then we charge the 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 consumer the difference. And so they're only paying the difference between the retail and the and the wholesale rate for power. That's that's, I know that's one one method that that some people have haven't have taken as well.
And Luke, can you can you clarify a bit what you mean by charge them the difference? Would that be on the kilowatt hours that the customer uses at night or their own kilowatt hours that they produce?
It'd be on it'd be on any kilowatt hour so that they're producing, anytime they're producing power, they get, they charge, the city pays for that power, just like it pays for any power we get from KPP. Is what I understand. And then we bill it back to the consumer at the consumer at the at the consumer cost.
So the, so I just want to make sure, if I had solar and I lived in Hillsborough and I gave you a kilowatt hour, I would actually pay you some kind of a revenue fee for that?
Well, you would, we would, you would, we would buy that power from you.
Okay.
At the at the at the at the wholesale rate, if you will. And then you pay only the difference, there's still a charge, and that's the difference between that number and the and the commercial charge. Ultimately, that's all you would pay is the difference between those between those rates, as I understand it.
Okay.
Now, I'm not, go ahead.
No, yeah, because the way, I'm quite sure how you're describing it. It sounds like I might be paying you to give you power. I guess.
No, 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 no.
It would just be the difference between wholesale and retail.
Got you. So like if at night I pulled power from you, I would buy it at retail. During the day, you would buy my power at wholesale?
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
That makes sense. Okay, and that would be the state mandated minimum. Yeah, I would, I would encourage you, and that information sounds like it's coming from KPP. And so I would encourage you to take their information with a grain of salt as someone that sells you power, just like you take my information with a grain of salt as someone that sells solar. They want to sell power, and so they're going to encourage you to do things that protect their revenue in addition to your revenue. One of the things solar can really help the city is with peak shaving. You guys get a bill from KPP based on your peak demand, and it happens during the peak summer months when solar is really producing. So solar does have benefit to the broader city population by helping offset some of that peak demand. And so there there's a lot of nuance in it, but that's why.
And I understand that it certainly, as as a member of KPP, we have, we have a variety of power sources, wind power being one of them, and we use the Greensburg Wind Wind Farm to do just that, to do peak, you know, help us with peak shaving. We're also doing a battery project in the city of Minneapolis for the same purpose, to help shave that peak load rate down. And so KPP, yes, they they are, they are looking to sell power, but they're also looking to sell power to their their members at the lowest possible cost. So it's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a variety of of the mix. But I hold our, I serve on the board, so there's a, there's certainly some bias there, I guess, if you will. But I think that the city has has reaped a big benefit from being a KPP member. So I think that what I would like to recommend is that we direct Mr. Styles to to get with KPP and look at what what we need to do on this and and bring some things back to the council for us to to look at taking action on and maybe in the next thirty to sixty days so that we can give some direction to to Mr. Horse's customer and and work with them, because we definitely want to encourage solar, the implementation of solar power where it makes sense, and we want to be, continue to be looking forward and not not looking backward, so.
I appreciate that. I guess one other thing I would encourage you to maybe think about is you would have the opportunity to be a pretty creative city. I don't know Hillsborough terribly well historically, but there are some ways that not many other, actually no other utilities in the state are doing that I know of, such as time of use metering. You could create a a solar metering tariff that would give different value to kilowatt hours based on time of day and which would line up with your costs from KPP. So during the peak sun hours, you pay, or not peak sun hours, during the high use hours in the summer, you pay more than you do at midnight in February. So that would be another way to structure the demand, and it would be interesting to see a utility embody that because a lot of utilities, particularly in on the coasts, do time of use. So anyway, I I've taken enough of your time. I appreciate you giving me a chance to speak. And if you have questions, Matt or others, I can I can be reached at our our office here.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you for for coming forward today, and and we'll certainly be be working on coming up with something, and I'm sure that you'll be hearing from Mr. Styles soon.
Okay, thanks, Lou, appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, are there any other public comments?
So if you want to make a public comment, you can either raise your hand in the participant section, or you can unmute yourself, and there's not too terribly many of you. So if you wanted to speak, you could just unmute yourself, and we could go from there, too.
Looks like County Commissioner Garing may be the only visitor we've got right now.
That is correct.
And I don't see him unmuted. So we will go ahead and close public comments, and we will now move to agenda item D, which is approval of minutes from our December fifteen, twenty twenty regular meeting and our twelve twenty-nine, twenty twenty special meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Garing, seconds. Any further discuss? I. Opposed, motion carries, four oh. We'll now move on to approval of vouchers. We have manual checks in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred thirty dollars, twenty-nine cents. We have computer checks in the amount of thirty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars, fifty-three cents for a total voucher approval of two hundred thirty thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
They moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries. We'll now move on to our business section of our agenda. Item one under our business section is firefighter pay, and I will turn it over to Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the opportunity today. So the fire department has brought forth, let me make sure I got my view up here. I seem to have hidden myself accidentally. Okay. So the fire department submitted a request in the last year for an increase in pay for firefighters and for this chief and assistant chief. So currently firefighters receive twelve fifty per run or drill. It's it's actually not pay, it's reimbursement. So technically, it's it's a reimbursement, but we just kind of shorthand it as pay. And the fire chief and assistant chief receive seven dollars or seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents for the same things. They're paid twice a year, June and December, and the first payroll runs from basically December to May. So if we did any kind of adjustment, you would be adjusting things from December as well. So if then the second payroll then runs from June through November. So we do pay them in in those kind of shift areas. So we did a little research as to what volunteer departments and hybrid departments are doing out and across Kansas. There's a lot of different ways that these get structured. Ninety percent of of fire departments in Kansas are some sort of volunteer or a hybrid mix. So there's lots of different ways to look at it. So it's not always apples and oranges, but what we've got is a list there for you that we pulled up. And then I also grabbed some information from Marion County Departments, too. We didn't have all of them when we we wrote this up, but I think we've got them all now. So everything, you know, things range from completely volunteer all in Ellsworth and Seneca, and then a lot of the the districts here in Marion County, they pay zero. There's some interesting things, like with Gossel, they pay mileage reimbursement, so it's a different thing. And then they go all the way up into thirty-plus dollars per run in places like Greensburg, Joaquinian, Paola, and even in Lincolnville, just up up the street in Lincolnville, the pay can run from anything from ten dollars all the way up to fifty dollars. The chief has some discretion depending on what the call is. So it's a weird kind of situation where, you know, he can kind of determine what that pay per run is. I don't, I don't know if I'd like that, but it's, it is what it is. So based on that, we found that the the average kind of pay for those type of things, you know, based on the different departments, was about fifteen sixty-nine. So from a competitiveness competitiveness perspective, the fifteen dollar request isn't too out of line. And in talking with Larry a little bit about it, I guess at one point, they they moved up from ten dollars to twelve fifty with the intention of going to fifteen, sort of a two-step process. And so this would be kind of the next step on that. And so we went back and looked at kind of how how that looks per year, and there are approximately, you know, a thousand to twelve hundred responses from firefighters. It's not incidents, that's the number of firefighters who show up who would get paid for responding to a call. So there there's about twelve hundred, up to twelve hundred of those, and then the fire chief and assistant chief, you get somewhere between two hundred and three hundred. So for the last year, from December of nineteen to twenty, November of twenty twenty, we looked at the responses of one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight and two hundred and sixty-three from the chief and assistant chief. So if you look at applying that, if you were to apply that to last year's pay, it would have been an increase of three thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. So, you know, it's not a huge amount of money when we talk about how it actually breaks out annualized over time. And usually, usually, there's a balance, you know, over nine thousand kind of of leeway within the the fire department personnel fund for responding to different things. So there should be sufficient resources unless we have a really bad year. I guess that's the only thing out there. That if we had an abnormal response here, we've got bigger problems than worrying about how to pay for the fire responses. But, you know, it it seems like we've got the budget authority to do that. And I, you know, I'm, I would recommend going to it. I think from a competitive standpoint, it's it's the right thing to do here. Puts us on par with people like Marion and a lot of other cities around here. It's really tough to get volunteer firemen and firefighters, as you say. So anything you can do to help keep that competitive is is really going to benefit us in the long run. We've been blessed with having a pretty good group of people that respond. We've got a great group that responds, they're consistent. But it's, it's a situation where, you know, that may change. So you never know, and keeping that competitiveness is really an important thing. So I would recommend going forward with it. But I would stand for any questions you may have with it. And I would say, if you were to take this action, which you can do just by taking an action and not having to worry about amending the ordinance or the background on that, we would ask that you do it for December of nineteen, starting in December of nineteen, so that we can catch everything on that payroll coming up in June.
Another question, it may be related and it may be unrelated, I'm not sure. When there's a false alarm and they have to go out, is there some kind of a fine that goes to the fire department then to help pay for that? Or is that just a fine that goes into a different pot somehow?
Well, if there is, I I honestly can't answer that question, Dave. I don't know about the false alarm fee. There usually is, that's a pretty standard thing to have. And if it did, it would go into the general fund, so it wouldn't be attached directly to the fire department, but it does go back into the general fund, which is where the fire department is paid for.
Is it adequate to pay for that run? There's a false alarm?
Uh, depends, depends on how many people show up. If it's, you know, the fee is fifty dollars and we have, you know, eight, eight or ten firemen show up, then no, it wouldn't. It would just have to, you know, but sometimes you only have a couple, a couple show up in there. Then in that case, you would be making money. I know that, you know, whoever's the first on scene tries to make that judgment call, and if they don't feel like they need more people, they will radio back to dispatch to to hold, sending more folks.
Other questions?
Research on that. I I don't, I apologize, I don't have that run fee.
That's okay, I didn't know if you would, but I just thought it's worth thinking about, you know, when we pay for this, if we pay for this raise, you know. A source of revenue for it.
How often do, are are you aware that that happens regularly, Dave?
I don't know. I don't know how often it happens, I just.
Yeah, I I don't either.
Yeah.
About false alarms?
Right.
There's some at Tabor every once in a while. That's the place where they're cooking or something in the dorm, and it sets off the alarm. And so the firemen go out there, they don't find anything, but they have to check it out, because there may be a fire. So it just goes with the job. I could probably ask Mason, he's in the other room, if you want to find out, because there aren't many times I might go there. If it's that important to me.
I just wondered how often our fire department has to respond to false alarms.
It's more than what you think because of the smoke alarms, they're set up. But it's really not out of hand, if that makes sense. I mean, if they wanted to, they could make some kind of rule where after so many false alarms, you get charged for it. But in order to fix that down there, they'd have to throw out a lot of stuff and do a lot of work. So it's almost easier just to go with a false alarm, have nothing going on. It would cost Tabor quite a bit to fix it, from what I understand, talking to some of the fire guys that go there.
I think they've done a pretty decent job of of trying to hedge that stuff off. I know Tabor, Tabor is the number one person because they have automated automated systems. So if there is a fire alarm that goes off and say like the townhomes, we're automatically dispatched, and that's just part of their fire security stuff. So they 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 do, I mean, it does happen. I can't tell you how often, I would have to defer to Ben on that. But I don't, I I kind of agree with Barney. I don't think it's way out of hand from what I've heard.
Yeah, it's better that happens than, you know, something happened and nobody got a call, that's what I look at.
That's true.
For that we have to to be very cognizant of, but at the same time, I'm pretty proud of our our emergency services team, and I think our fire department is, I I defy anybody to find a better one, you know, better volunteer department than than ours in terms of in terms of ability, response, dedication, the training that they go through to stay current. So I think I'd I'd certainly like to see us go ahead and in 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 take action on this. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the the recommendation to increase firefighter pay? Okay, we we have a motion by Councilman McCarty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Garing. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Styles will now move on to reimbursement request number twenty-nine on the KDHE water project.
Thank you, sir. So this is hopefully getting to be one of the last requests. We've tried to get them to finish out billing for this project. It's been open since two thousand seventeen. Doing parts of it since two thousand seventeen. So what this is, is four thousand four hundred and thirty-one fifty for EBH for designing, and they're they're catching up on some of the designing fees and then updating our waterline maps, which they've been actively doing with the water department. So just part of that project, and you can kind of see from the budget sheet, which is the third sheet in there, that there's, they still have a little bit left on the design piece, basically. So I would expect to see one, maybe two more of these, but we are encouraging them to a little bit ridiculous. So would look for approval of this today, and then hopefully not too many more in the future.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve reimbursement request number twenty-nine KDHE water project to EBH in the amount of four thousand where is it now, four thousand, excuse me, I'm sorry, four thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Oh, I got motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Motion carries. We'll now move on to agenda item three, Elcon invoices. Mr. Styles.
He served, so we have a handful of Elcon invoices today. A little bit unusual for some of them. The airport, we had the Sir, so we have a handful of Elcon invoices today, uh a little bit unusual for some of them. The airport, we had the uh the credit card fuel master controller that we use to allow um charges for fuel. So we don't have to manage it out there. It had an issue and we we had to replace the surge protector on it. Um they had to rebuild the surge protector in effect, uh and took a lot of, took a lot of time, a lot of effort uh to get that up and running, but it does work now. So that was, that's the first one there for one thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. Um we had work in this room to do uh the setup for this, and so that was that was a a pretty big job too, so you got a list of all the the items there and then the labor with that, so that ended up being twenty uh two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-two cents. And then we had uh as part of this project, anytime you do a renovation project, you find something that you need to fix too. Uh another thing, we had a an old Pacific, federal Pacific panel that was running this in the kitchen in the uh in the city hall area here, and that was out of code. And so we had, while while they were in here doing that work, we had Elcon replace that for us. Something that we've probably have put off a while, but you know, something we had to do, uh not just for this project, but for the safety of the entire building. Uh so that was nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And then we just had some some stuff with the uh welding school. We had to help uh we had to do some things to, they moved a a lathe machine, and so we had to help um get the the electric for that, so that one was six hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. And then the last one was just some um some straps that we got, just regular parts on that, so that was four dollars and seventy-three cents. So the total on that, I don't have my tape in front of me, but I think it's, we'd have to run a tape on it, five thousand, a little over fifty-four hundred dollars, I believe, is the total. Can run that real quick.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the Elcon invoices for payment in the in the approximate amount of fifty-four hundred dollars.
I moved.
Councilman Drigger's moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All abstaining?
Abstaining.
All opposed? Motion carries, invoices are approved for payment. Um there are no board appointments today, and we will now move uh to our city administrators' report. Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. Uh I wanted to just give you an update on some of the grass fires we've been fighting. Speaking of the fire department, we had a couple of pretty big ones uh right before Christmas. So it was a a situation at the Fish Place, which is on one hundred and ninetieth street. Uh they were very quick to respond, but it was a very dry, very windy day, um and it was also a very big fire, and it was you know, Fire Chief Ben referred to it as a miracle that it didn't burn down the house, and I think that's probably true based on the conditions that day. Uh and the day before, they were fighting and helping fight a a large grass fire in Marion, and I think that they actually lost the house in Roxbury at that point. Um so and I attached some of the the reporting from the Marion County Record uh on that too, so you can kind of see it. Uh EMS, so we had, we talked with uh Commissioner Garing, County Commissioner Garing. Uh and so let Mayor Mayor Lou and I sent the letter that's attached there, uh kind of outlining some of the stuff with the EMS building. You know, they've been talking, I think this project's bounced around for all of twenty twenty, and so uh we came to the point where we felt like it needed to to come to some some kind of agreement or 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 go goes other way, so uh I know EMS has talked about remodeling and building in town, so we wanted to get down on paper some of uh what we thought would be good, either, you know, we've talked about a shared facility or an adjacent facility to what will be our public safety building on the corner of uh Third Nash Street there. Um so what we outlined for the county commission was, look, this is what we 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 were thinking about. Um so the property would be a long-term lease for a dollar a year. Um we would do basic prep, site prep, some utility work to get things going. You know, and that it's a pretty, pretty straightforward kind of approach to doing it, but we got to the point where um Josh and and um the county council were kind of talking back and forth and realized that there are so many issues that we can't really move forward effectively without spending a lot of time and effort unless we have an agreement uh that this is what we want to do. So uh we sent this over to the county commission, and I'm not sure when they'll take it up, but um we wanted to make sure that they had this in hand before they made any decisions on uh buying a new building or buying an existing building in Hillsboro. I know they've looked at a couple, so uh we're kind of on the, at the moment where we just need to have a decision or 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 move our separate ways, so that that was the EMS thing. Uh front desk, we're adding a new piece to the accounting software, it's an integrated product. Um it's got a lot of cool functionality things that will allow people to log in. We having trouble with paying payments online and doing different things uh with court, we're going to be able to pay some court things online, so this new product uh we've we signed up for that with front desk, and we'll also um it takes care of a couple of our modules that we currently pay for, so we'll net back some savings there. Uh it also has the ability to do texts and emails from the system, much like our Code Red system does. Uh we've been kind of evaluating that. We don't have a lot of users on it right now, and the people who have used it have had some uh mixed reactions to it as far as what it actually does. I don't know that it actually delivers on some of the promises that it has in the system. Uh the automated weather thing is kind of the big one that's different. We wouldn't have automated weather. From from my experience and experience of the the dozen other people we talked to, that doesn't seem to be a big deal. Uh because it doesn't work all the time anyway. So, you know, if we were to get rid of Code Red and replace it with uh the front desk costs, we'd actually end up saving about twelve hundred dollars a year, so that's kind of the way I'm leaning unless someone feels pretty powerfully about Code Red. Like I say, I just don't think it's been grabbed on to quite as well as we had hoped, and uh you know, we've used it a couple of times for notifications. Um it does ring landline phones, which can be beneficial, but a lot of times what we see is it'll it'll ring an astronomical number of calls, but only you know, a a dozen, two dozen, thirty, forty get actually picked up. Um so it's, it's kind of, it's got pros and cons, but I would be okay. I think everybody else would be uh from the city staff perspective of not having Code Red anymore and replacing it with front desk. Uh but that's something we can talk about of Code Red as we're on uh on contract for that for another three or four months, so we'll have that discussion when it comes back up.
I'm having a real hard time not wanting to ask who ordered the Code Red, but we'll just leave it there for now.
Yeah, yeah, no comment, don't know. Um staffing plan, so you you may or may not know that we have a large number of retirements coming up in twenty twenty-one. Um Jan's Jan set to retire, uh Mike Dirksen, the electrical superintendent, set to retire. Uh Gary Andrews at the golf course is also set to retire at the end of this year, so uh we're working on kind of some restructuring things and figuring out how best to meet our staffing challenges. Um so we're gonna, I'm gonna have some stuff for you on that, and I'm gonna bring that back to you hopefully the first meeting in February. Uh we're also doing an update on some of the employee handbook stuff and some other policies that are in there. I think we can make some some minor tweaks to make us a little bit more competitive uh as far as when we have to hire people. I think that there there's a few things that we could address that probably do need to be addressed, just some older policies that don't really work um modern in in more modern hiring kind of practices, so uh you can look forward to that. I won't overwhelm you with it because it is a lot. Um so we'll probably break it down in chunks and take it meeting by meeting. Uh COVID nineteen testing, so there's nothing, I haven't had any further contact, and the state originally thought they were going to do some COVID testing here in town at the museum, and they that never materialized, so I'm not sure if we're ever going to get any of that. Um but we've been doing regular screening with the water department and had no negatives there, uh and we've also been doing city employees with um who have symptoms or have been exposed. We've had three out of the five people that we've tested that aren't in the water department test positive, so um that's been a good thing. We've been able to get those people, folks out of circulation and on quarantine, and we just currently, and we have one uh employee that's with a positive test that's on quarantine. Um and that person is due back at the end of the week, so uh anytime we do these tests, we do have to report them to KDHE, so they go directly into the portal and uh KDHE kind of handles that. Uh city council room, as you can see, we're, I'm here testing it now. You can kind of, hopefully the the camera's pretty good. I think the microphone works pretty well. Uh the one thing that we have an issue with, and you you may have seen it, I don't know, uh I I can only see my end, but the internet connection is not great here right now, and so until uh the fiber gets switched on, um it's it's going to be maybe a little sketchy in spots. Uh particularly if we have other people in the building using our bandwidth, so uh looking forward to getting everybody in here when we can, and hopefully we can get that um you know, once that fiber issue, that quality issues will resolve themselves. I think it's a really great system. It works really well. Some, we're real, real happy with that. I did talk a little bit to the folks over at TC Wireless, wondering when that actually was going to happen. Um they're back at work, they had a little break from the holidays, and they're back giving us fifty locates a day now. Um so they're back going great guns, and they said that they were looking toward the end of this month potentially to start switching people on, so they're a little behind schedule. Uh but hopefully we'll be in in good position uh to get that service going here pretty shortly. Uh recycling changes, anytime you change anybody's recycling, it creates problems for people, but we've been sending out notifications, calendars, maps. We did drop the recycling down to two routes, which we think is a little bit easier for us to manage. And so now people's recycling is every other week instead of, we had some weird things where we would have a fifth week and we wouldn't do anything, and people would get confused around the holidays too, so uh we've changed that up, and we've been trying to blanket everybody we can, and the Free Press ran something for us uh on it, and we've been putting it in our in our bills, and it's on Facebook, it's on our website, we've been trying to hit everybody. And so that, those those changes took effect this week. Um and so what that does is we don't, we don't collect um recycling on Fridays anymore, which allows us to do more preventative maintenance on our vehicles and also handle some of the other projects that we have, and also do um large item pickup at the end of the month, so trash routes did not change at all, so if you're worried about your trash route, that did not change. We've had a lot of calls about that. It's just recycling, so um I'm sure we'll have more as that comes through, and we'll we'll see after that first day. Um and then the sales tax receipts, you got a copy of that in there. Um so we ended the year at seven hundred and eight thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and five cents. Uh that's an improvement of ten percent, up from ten percent from uh two thousand nineteen and about eleven percent if you take the last three years and average them together, so you know, it's it's been, we we've been one of the winners, I guess, if there is such a thing as a winner in the in the COVID crisis, and the people have stayed local and have continued to spend their money locally. Um so, you know, in in talking to our retail businesses, they've had pretty good years. Um you know, not to, not to say that that takes away from the the health crisis, because obviously tho- those numbers continue to go up. Um but you know, the sales set, from a sales tax perspective, the sky didn't fall like we thought it would. Uh property tax was the same way for this year, this last year, so um you know, from that perspective, we did okay. Uh we'll say that, you know, the the COVID cases, they were, they continue to go up, and our mask mandate ordinance uh expires in Jan- at the end of January, so at the next meeting, if we want to um extend that, we would have to do that at the next meeting on the nineteenth, so uh just put that out there, that that's another discussion we'll have to have. I think it was uh Marion extended theirs till June, I believe, yesterday, if I if I heard right. Uh but they've extended theirs, not that that means anything for us necessarily, but uh it's something that we'll have to keep an eye on too. So that is all I had today, sir.
Thank you, it's been, as a, I'm not aware of of that we've had any issues with enforcement or or otherwise with our mask mandate. Are you aware of any?
No, we've not written any tickets. Uh we've had, we've given a few people a a nice talking to uh and then giving them masks, but we have had no issues really with that. We set up an email for people to call in if they are, oh well, whilst to call in email if they had an issue with somebody not wearing the mask. We haven't gotten any emails. Um to my knowledge, we haven't gotten any calls either, aside from the first first in the initial wave, we, well, we did get one call uh about a uh somebody um at one of the retailers out in Hillsborough Heights, but you know, we went out there and and uh police department went out there and kind of talked to the management, and they were all wearing masks at the time, so it may have been a fluke, we're not sure, but uh by and large, people have been pretty good about it.
It doesn't appear, looking at the numbers that were released yesterday, that uh that uh the numbers are going down by any means. There was a close to, there was in the upper forties were reported yesterday by the county health department, so our numbers are not going down. The good news is, is that uh we were down, we went from uh having six or seven people in the hospital to only one, so that was, that was certainly good news. So I think it's something we need to think about, and uh we definitely need to have on the agenda for our next meeting. And uh we need to uh see where we go.
And I don't know if I mentioned it or not, but we have had a our our firefighters who are EMTs have also had a handful of them get the first shot of their vaccine, so uh they've been in line and they'll get a second shot in a month. Um so the the vaccine is coming out, and we we have been seeing people getting it. Um and uh utility workers are in group one B from the state plan, but I don't I don't know if anyone really knows what the state plan is. Um so, you know, we're, we should be in line for that too, for our utility people here. Hopefully, maybe by the end of the month or into February, I'm not sure how that's going to go, depending on what kind of availability we get.
Listening in to the county commission meeting on Monday, uh it appeared to be, there appeared to be some frustration expressed by the county health nurse regarding that that plan or or the direction that that that's all going, so I think there's a lot of uh of uh things that aren't clear yet, so uh I guess we'll just have to kind of keep, keep taking the step ahead, one step ahead at a time, so. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for attending.